Good evening, everyone. Township of Edison Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting is now in session. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975 has been provided by the annual notice published in the Home News and Tribune on December 28, 2018, and has been posted in the main lobby of the municipal complex on January 4, 2019. Please join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Beatty?
Present.
Mr. Sedata?
Present.
Mr. Taglianetti?
Present.
Mr. Mansouri?
Present.
Mr. Schmuel?
Here.
Mr. Comba?
Here.
Vice Chair Ebar?
He's...
Chairwoman Federick?
Here.
Mrs. Shaw?
Present.
Mr. Bignell?
Here.
Mr. Carr is absent. Mr. Bledscher is not here. Okay?
Good evening, everyone. Just one announcement. The first case, Z-50-2018, just nations, will not be heard this evening. It will have to be re-noticed. Having said that, can you read the next case, please, Mr. Ayat?
Yes, Care One, Z-46, 2017, continuation of case, Care One LLC, 1350 Inman Road, Edison, New Jersey, Section 37, 11.1 and 37.631, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 16. Balkan use devariances sought to permit an assisted living facility along with the existing skilled nursing facility in a zone where it is not permitted. Required use is residential. Proposed is an assisted living facility. Maximum building coverage required is 15%. Proposed is 16.8%. Maximum lot coverage required is 30%. Proposed is 41.8%. Maximum FAR required is 0.25. Proposed is 0.28. Maximum building height required is 40 feet. And that's all we have.
That's it. Ms. Arum, as you know, in my usual, we'll see where we are at 10 o'clock and we'll take it from there as to where we're going from there. As to where we're going from there.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Donna Arum from Keazah Shahini and John Tomasi representing the applicant, Care One at Birchwood LLC. This evening, we're continuing our presentation with our traffic engineer, Daniel Disario from Langen Engineering, who submitted a traffic and parking statement. And then I'll follow with Paul Phillips, who's our professional planner, and he'll review the statutory criteria for the variances. If I may, I'd just like to mark a couple of things into the record.
Sure.
One was the report submitted by Matthew Morello from Lewis Good Friend and Associates. If I could just mark that in as A-37. And then there's, I think it's important that you have the generator law that was passed in December of 2015, and I'll give that to you. We could mark that as A-37.
38?
I'm...37. I think we started with 36?
No, 37. You said 37.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant to say 36. Okay. Then the generator law would be 37. And then there's a memo dated June 7th from Morris James. Let's just mark that as A-38. And then when Mr. Disario starts to testify, I'll mark his report as A-39. Okay?
The generator law, do you have a copy for everyone?
The what?
The generator law.
Oh, the law? Um, I have, yeah. You know what I did? I had them copied. I left them in my office, but it's a statute from the legislature, so I can submit copies if you like tomorrow. It's, I don't think anyone's actually going to sit here and read this right now.
You're right, right now. Not right now, because we have to be listening.
So I'll give this to you. I have another copy. All right. If I may, have Mr. Disario sworn, please.
Yes, sir.
My name is Bernard Riley. I'm appearing in lieu of Ronald Gazarovski, who was the attorney appearing in the earlier meetings. And the reason I'm here instead of him is he had a fall over the weekend, which kind of made him unable to come, and so I've been substituted in on short notice. There have been discussions with the attorney for the applicant and also the board attorney, and basically, I think, we've agreed, obviously subject to the board's approval, that she would, rather than slow the thing up or delay the matter, she would present her witnesses and they would be subject to questions by the board and by the general public, but as far as Mr. Gazarovski's cross-examination of her witnesses, that would be held at the next meeting, and then he would present his rebuttal experts.
So just to be sure, you don't have any of the people that you represent here tonight?
No, they're here, but...
Okay. Just so you're aware, the people that you represent, and I had spoken to Mr. Gazarovski about this.
Yes.
They will not be permitted to speak this evening. If he has to present them as witnesses...
Correct.
It'll be next time?
Yes.
So it'll only be the persons who are not represented that will be permitted to speak this evening?
Correct. The general public who is not represented.
Okay.
That's the way I understand it.
Having said that, we have to know who your clients are, because we do not know at this point who they are. So they either have to sit in one row together or raise their hands, or we have to be able to distinguish them from the public.
Okay. Why don't, can they all sit over?
All persons represented by Mr. Gazarovski, can we just? One, two. Is there anyone else represented by Mr. Gazarovski?
No, I just believe it's these two gentlemen.
Okay.
So the others will be able to speak.
Right.
And I appreciate the board's courtesy. Again, we didn't want to delay things because of his problems.
Okay.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So my understanding is that's the board's wish, and Mr. Gazarovski will present his cross at our next meeting?
Yeah, we're going to extend the courtesy to objectors to have that opportunity.
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay. Onward. Hi, Mr. Disario.
Hello.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Even though you've been here, just for the record, qualifications, please?
Certainly. My name is Dan. Last name is Disario, D-I-S-A-R-I-O. I'm a vice president and principal at the firm of Langen Engineering Environmental Sciences, headquartered in Parsippany, New Jersey. I oversee all traffic and transportation work at the firm across all of our 30 offices. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as three other states. I'm also a certified professional traffic operations engineer, which is another certification by exam, and that's a national certification. I have been licensed as a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey for close to 26 years, and I've appeared before various zoning boards and planning boards at hundreds of municipalities across the state.
Okay, thank you. We'll accept your qualifications.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Disario is being accepted as an expert in traffic engineering. Mr. Disario submitted a traffic and parking statement dated March 28, 2018, revised May 31, 2018, and again August 14, 2018, that I would mark as A-39 in evidence. And I will ask, Mr. Disario, were you asked to analyze the parking and traffic impacts in any, if any, that might result from the operation of the proposed assisted living center by the applicant?
Yes, and the culmination of that work was the study that you referenced, too, which is Exhibit 839.
Okay. Please provide the board with your analysis and findings with regard to the necessary parking and any traffic impact as a result of the operation of the assisted living facility as proposed by the applicant, as well as advise the board, in your opinion, as to whether the site will operate effectively and safely and efficiently as designed?
Forgive me, I'm a little hoarse tonight. I think I'm getting sick for the second time within three weeks, so if you can't hear me, please let me know. And I do have a bottle of water that I may be taking sips of quite frequently. As the board's aware, we prepared the traffic and parking statement, which is dated, revised August 14, 2018, and it's Exhibit A-39. And I will be referring to that study as I summarize the results of our work. As with any application, a traffic study identifies existing conditions and then projects future conditions, accounting for whatever's proposed in terms of development on a particular site. And that's what we did. We assessed both traffic operations, as well as site aspects of the proposed site plan relative to circulation and parking supply. And as part of our work, we did traffic counts at the existing Care One facility, which is a skilled nursing facility, which is a little different than what is proposed before this board this evening. What's proposed before this board this evening is an assisted living facility with a component for dementia care. So it's a little different in its operations, generally speaking. Assisted living facilities require less staff, and they generate less traffic than a skilled nursing facility would generate. We did counts specifically at the existing skilled nursing facility along Inman Avenue on Thursday, May 24, 2018. So we counted all the traffic that was coming into and out of that existing site for a total of 12 hours, from 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 in the evening. So all the traffic making a left turn or a right turn, coming into and out of that existing site, where that existing facility is, as well as the through traffic along Inman Avenue for those total 12 hours. Based on those counts, we identified that there were two hours that had the highest traffic volume along Inman and the driveway combined. So the morning peak hours, so the highest traffic volume in the morning over the count period that we conducted counts, occurred from 7:15 to 8:15 in the morning. Similarly, in the evening, the highest hour of traffic volume that was recorded occurred from 5:15 to 6:15 in the evening. During that morning peak hour, again, from 7:15 to 8:15 in the morning, a total of 29 vehicles entered that existing site. So the existing Care One facility, 28 vehicles came in and eight vehicles came out for the hour of 7:15 to 8:15. In the evening, again, from 5:15 to 6:15, which was the highest volume in the evening, 18 vehicles came in and 20 vehicles came out. Now, I would respectfully submit to you, that level of traffic generation on the whole spectrum of land uses that you could come up with, that is a relatively low traffic generator. And it's been my experience working with Care One and other healthcare providers, that generally speaking, more often than not, their facilities do not generate a lot of traffic. And their facilities, at least as perceived by somebody that's passing them, do not exhibit something of a significant traffic generator. In other words, if you go past the existing facility today, anytime during the day, but let's talk about the peak hours that we've identified, you do not get the perception that that existing facility is generating a lot of traffic. You don't see a lot of people waiting to turn in there at any time of the day, but particularly during peak hours. And you don't see a lot of people trying to turn out of that existing site at any time. And when you have a use like that, I would, again, respectfully submit to you that that type of use is not a significant traffic generator, and part and parcel to that is, they do not generate significant traffic impacts to the surrounding areas with which they exist. Another thing that we identified, based on those traffic counts, and I did find this quite interesting, and it was unexpected, about two-thirds of the traffic coming to the existing Care One facility on Inman Avenue are oriented to and from the east. In other words, about two-thirds of the traffic would be coming westbound on Inman Avenue, and they make a right turn into the existing facility. And that holds true for the traffic that's exiting that facility. About two-thirds of it makes a left turn onto Inman Avenue to head eastbound. So about one-third is oriented to and from the west. About one-third of the traffic for the existing facility makes a left turn into that site, and about a third of the exiting traffic makes a right turn back out onto Inman Avenue to head towards the old Radnor Road intersection. So two-thirds, one-third split. Two-thirds to and from the east, one-third to and from the west. I thought it would be more about 50/50, but the count suggested otherwise. That existing skilled nursing facility has 106 beds. If you look at the traffic generation that we identified for those highest hours, and you create essentially a trip rate, trips per bed of the existing facility, and you apply those trip rates to the proposed facility, which is, excuse me, I have to clarify something. The existing facility is 122 beds. So if you do trip rates, vehicles per bed, based on 122 beds at the existing facility, and you apply those rates to the proposed facility, which is 106 beds that are proposed, you would come up with the following trip generation estimates for the proposed facility. So during a morning peak hour, the proposed facility, again, based on the counts we did at the existing facility, 25 vehicles would come in and seven vehicles would leave during a morning peak hour. Similarly, for the proposed facility, 16 vehicles would come in and 17 vehicles would leave during an evening peak hour. Now typically, and as I'm sure the board has reviewed other applications with traffic studies, typically, when you're estimating traffic generation for a new development that is proposed, traffic engineers will refer to published trip rate data, more often than not, contained in the trip generation manual that's prepared or published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. That document is in its 10th edition. So if you were to apply the trip rates for an assisted living facility as contained in that ITE publication, Trip Generation Manual, 10th Edition, you would get the following estimated trip generation counts for the proposed facility. During the morning, based on IT trip rates, 13 vehicles would come in, eight vehicles would leave, and in the evening, 11 vehicles would enter and 17 vehicles would leave for the evening peak hour. So using the existing counts at the existing facility and applying them to the proposed facility that's before you, results in higher traffic estimates than what would otherwise be the case if we were to use the widely published trip rate data as put forth by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. So to prepare a conservative analysis, we elected to use the higher estimates based on the traffic counts of the existing facility.
I have a quick question, if I may. I apologize to interrupt.
No, please.
Just to clarify, so your existing conditions in the lot are in the peak hours in the morning? And forgive me, I don't actually have the report in front of me. It's 28 incoming, eight leaving, then, correct?
29 coming in.
Oh, 29, thank you.
Yep.
Then the exiting is 18 incoming, 20 leaving?
Correct.
And the proposed structure is going to, the traffic is 25 incoming, five leaving, and then 11 incoming, 17 leaving. Correct?
No. It's 25 coming in.
Right.
Seven leaving.
Seven, okay.
Yep. And then for the evening, it's 16 coming in.
16.
And 17 leaving.
17 leaving.
And those numbers are based on the counts we derive from the existing facility. If we were to use the published data, we would have lower numbers. And based on the published data, just so the record's complete, it would be 13 coming in and eight leaving in the morning, and 11 coming in and 17 exiting in the evening.
So I'm going to just follow up. The, what is the existing parking lot space currently for the existing condition?
In terms of the number of parking spaces?
Yes.
The existing facility has 87 parking spaces.
87, and it proposed?
As part of this application, two things are happening.
Okay.
11 spaces will, new spaces will be constructed, and they were part of a previous approval that those spaces were banked, meaning they were approved but never built, and they were going to be built if and when they were needed. And then there's a reconfiguration of some of the existing parking on the existing facility, so that four additional parking spaces would be provided. So the total increase in parking supply of just the existing facility is 15.
15?
Yes.
Okay. And, okay, I'll, please continue my...
You're welcome.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Disario.
Madam Chair, I have a question as well.
Yes, Mr. Beatty.
Sir, you said that the study was done on a Thursday. Was it, is that a, was there a reason for picking a Thursday, or was it just a random day?
It was a random day, but generally speaking, if we're looking at a non-retail use, we look at Tuesday to Thursday. If we're looking at a retail use, we generally do Friday and Saturday.
And the traffic manual that you referred to, the 10th edition, does that make recommendations based on the days as well?
It does not.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So if you look at our estimated traffic generation, which again is higher than what would otherwise be suggested by the published data, and you break that down in terms of two-thirds to and from the east along Inman Avenue and one-third to and from the west along Inman Avenue, because my expectation would be the new facility would exhibit the same distribution of cars coming into and out of the new site, similar to the existing site. When you break that down and you start to really look at it at a granular level, we're talking about to and from the east, so east of the site in either direction along Inman Avenue, about one additional vehicle in either direction at worst case every four minutes during peak hours, whether it's the morning peak hour or the evening peak hour. Similarly, if you look at Inman Avenue to the west of the site, in either direction, we're talking about one additional vehicle approximately every six minutes during those peak hours. Now, if you, if we were to sit here for four minutes and not say a word, you would think that was an eternity. And it is an eternity to sit silently for four minutes. And in that time, there would be one additional vehicle that would come westbound along Inman Avenue, that would turn into the new site, and there would be one vehicle that would head in the other direction along Inman Avenue. That level of traffic generation, in my opinion, is not significant, and it will not significantly impact area traffic operations. And I would even submit to you for your consideration, if you were to go out there and observe traffic operations today, and this board was inclined to grant the applicant its approval, and they were to build the facility in the future, and you went back out there again and you observed traffic operations with this proposed facility in place, you would not be able to discern any noticeable difference in traffic operations along the Inman Avenue corridor as a result of this proposed development. Again, because the traffic generation is so low, and when you start to account for the directions that new vehicles would be traveling to and from the site along Inman Avenue, that traffic generation is even lower as it relates to traffic impacts. We did a quantification of operations of the proposed driveway for the new facility, as well as the driveway of the existing facility. Both driveways, if you are inclined to grant an approval and a new facility was built, would operate, at worst, individual movements, a level of service C. I can tell you for unsignalized stop-controlled driveways, level of service C is very favorable operations, and certainly favorable in the context of our state, where a lot of unsignalized stop-controlled driveways operate much worse than what we're proposing. Level of service C is completely acceptable by every review agency that typically reviews traffic operations, whether it's Middlesex County, State Department of Transportation, as well as local municipalities such as yourselves. So it's my opinion that, as it relates to traffic operations, the proposed driveway, as well as the existing driveway for the existing facility, will operate acceptably without issuing terms of delay, not only to people trying to turn into and out of each of the sites, but also the people that are traveling past those driveways along Inman As it relates to parking supply, you've heard my testimony earlier in response to a board member's question, that the existing facility's parking supply currently stands at 87 parking spaces. As part of this proposal before you, that would be increased by an additional 15 parking spaces. So it's going from 87 to 102. And frankly speaking, I am completely aware that at times, the existing facility doesn't have enough parking to accommodate the cars that are on that site. I've passed that site. I've seen cars parking along the front in the grass, but I will submit to you that the increase in parking supply that's proposed will adequately accommodate the parking demands of that existing facility.
And just a quick question. And what is proposed for the skilled facility site is compliant with the parking ordinance?
Yes, that is correct. To look at or assess the parking demand, and I should say estimate the parking demand of the proposed facility, and again, the proposed facility's a little different than the existing facility. It's an assisted living facility with a dementia care component to it. Care One has a similar facility down in Morristown, New Jersey, so it's not Morristown, New Jersey up north. It's Morristown, New Jersey, which is down south. It's a suburb of Philadelphia on the Jersey side. We had an expansion application. Actually, Donna Arum and myself worked on that project, where the Care One wanted to do an expansion. So we had the occasion to count, do parking counts essentially, to identify max, maximum parking demand, so the maximum number of cars parked at that facility as part of that application. So we got to collect research data as it relates to parking demands for Care One Assisted Living Dementia Care Facility in Morristown, New Jersey. That is part of our study, and you can look at the details if you'd like to. I'll just give you an overall summary of that work. So in the fall of 2017... So in the fall of 2017, that's a sixty-eight-bed facility. We collected over forty hours of parking data over several days for that facility. And over those four days and forty hours of parking data that we collected, the highest number of vehicles that were recorded at any time during that forty hours was forty-four vehicles. That equates to point-six-five parked vehicles per bed. So it's maximum parking demand, forty-four vehicles, it's a sixty-eight-bed facility, point-six-five vehicles per bed was the highest parking ratio that we recorded for that facility. We applied that ratio to the proposed facility that's before you. That's a hundred-six beds that are proposed. And if you apply that parking ratio that we identified from Morristown, New Jersey, to what's before you this evening, we would estimate the proposed facility before you would have a maximum parking demand of sixty-nine vehicles. The applicant is proposing a total parking supply of ninety-two parking spaces, which I understand is compliant with your ordinance, and I would submit to you, I believe the proposed parking supply will be more than what the facility would otherwise require. So as it relates to parking supply, it's my opinion that the applicant is putting forth not only parking supply that's compliant with the ordinance requirement, but it's a parking supply that I believe will also meet the demands of the proposed facility, and will likely be more than what would otherwise be required, based on our work on the Morristown facility in New Jersey. As it relates to the parking layout and design, I have reviewed the site plan, in fact, Mike Fowler, who you heard from, I guess, a few meetings prior, who testified to the site design. We work together very closely, he's from Langin as well, and it's my opinion that the site plan, as it relates to circulation and parking layout and design, meets current standards as it relates to parking lot design, and I believe that the site will provide efficient circulation throughout those parking areas.
Thank you, Mr. DiSario. I have no further questions for him.
Okay, I have one question of Mr. DiSario, and then I have a question of you, Mr. Bignell. Um, the ins and outs, the what you say is proposed, that is full amount, that not, that is not in addition to the ins and outs that you gave us for the existing, correct?
N- no, Madam Chair, that's in addition to.
In addition to?
Yes, so each, the existing facility has its own driveway to Inman Avenue, and the proposed facility that's before you this evening will have a separate driveway to serve that site.
Okay, that's what I wanted to get clear of record.
Yep.
Mr. Bignell, a question, we're looking at your September fourth, twenty-eighteenth letter, correct?
September fourth.
Okay. You talk about a hundred-and-ninety-four spaces. You said there, there is a total of a hundred-and-eighty-three parking spaces are proposed, plus an additional eleven banked, for a hundred-and-ninety-four. Mr. DiSario just said eighty-seven plus fifteen, am I missing something somewhere?
No, you, you have those numbers correct. So the, the existing facility's parking supply would be increased to ninety, excuse me, a hundred-two spaces.
Okay.
And we're proposing for the new facility ninety-two. So the total between the two sites is one-hundred-and-ninety-four proposed parking, well, a hundred-and-two proposed parking spaces.
No, a hundred-and-two existing plus the ninety-two proposed, which gives us the one-ninety-four, which Mr. Bignell talks about.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted that correct of, of record, okay, thank you. Does the board have any questions of Mr. DiSario? Yes, Mr. Ben.
On the same report that you made, that you referred to this hour, under the part review, this, this must be a mistake, right? It says total required nineteen thousand seven forty-four.
It should be one-ninety-seven. One-ninety-four, I see.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, if you can clarify something for me. On your May count, on your vehicle count, on that Thursday, from five-fifteen to six-fifteen, and then again in the evening, um, total vehicular count was forty-seven? Total? Back in two thousand and eighteen?
When you say total vehicle count, I don't know what.
For, for, five-fifteen to six-fifteen in the morning, you counted eighteen vehicles in, twenty went out, is that right?
Twenty out.
Okay.
So a total of thirty-eight.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, in the evening, five-fifteen to six-fifteen in the evening?
Correct.
So that's eighteen vehicles, right? Or twenty total, twenty total? Or thirty-eight total? What is the total vehicular count?
Thirty-eight, so eighteen came in and twenty left. So a total two-way volume at the driveway from five-fifteen to six-fifteen of thirty-eight
Trips. Thirty-eight, okay, that's what I wanted to know, okay. So you're gonna add an additional a hundred-and-six beds, correct?
Yes.
So am I safe to say that you're gonna come close to doubling the vehicle count?
We are going to, we're estimating, based on the existing facility's traffic characteristics, an additional thirty-two in the morning.
Mm-hmm.
And an additional thirty-three in the evening. So almost double.
Yeah, so you're doubling the vehicle count. All right, I just wanna, I want the board to be made aware of that, okay?
Any other questions, Mr. Mansur?
Uh, just, just one, what is the current sta-, uh, number of staff in the existing facility? Am I just kinda going off?
The, the staff?
The.
Oh, I don't, we don't know that, that's, that, that facility is already up and running, so we don't, we don't have that information right now.
Do you have maybe the, for the proposed facility, wha-, uh, what the additional number of staff would be required?
I, that was put on the record, um, that was testified to. I think, uh, I think the answer was, uh, thirty-nine at the largest shift, but you can check the record.
There are two shifts, correct?
I think, I, I think the record is that there's three, but it's in the record.
Yes, the thirty-nine.
Thank you.
Thirty-nine. I have my notes. Uh, any other questions of the board? None? None? We're all finished? Next?
Mr. DiSario, just could you follow up with Mr. Iote's question about the traffic generation and the impact? Because obviously he's saying it's double, um, the existing tra-, uh, traffic generation, uh, whether or not there are any nuances to that?
Certainly, and I recall an application here, it was over twenty years ago, Jeff Lera was the board attorney, and it was a very, it was for a very small, uh, project where its traffic generation was on the order of like four trips, and a permitted use would have generated two trips, and Mr. Lera said that's a hundred percent increase, isn't that significant? And I said, it is absolutely not significant as it relates to traffic generation and traffic impacts and changes to operations. So we concede the point, the pure numbers, we're almost doubling what the existing facility would generate, but as I've testified to, I would characterize the existing facility as not a high-traffic generator, not having high-traffic impacts. If the board members were to go and drive the area and pass the existing facility, I think you would share that same opinion, or at least come to that same conclusion. And I break it down to what are the additional cars that you're gonna see along Inman Avenue in either direction? And as I testified to earlier, at worst, we're looking to and from the east, which is where most of the traffic associated with the new facility would be coming to and from and going to.
And that's away from the intersection, correct?
Yes. Each one additional vehicle every four minutes in either direction along Inman Avenue. That's our highest impact. So east of the site, you could expect one additional vehicle either coming westbound towards the site, or eastbound leaving the site, along Inman Avenue, east of the site, every four minutes. I would, again, respectfully submit to you, that level of traffic increase is not gonna be able to be perceived by anyone, and changes to traffic operations associated with that increase, and I would characterize it as nominal, will not be significant. And again, I don't believe anyone would be able to discern any noticeable difference in traffic operations in the area because of this proposed facility.
I have no, no further questions?
No, the board, correct? No other questions of the board? No, none.
And thank you for your time.
All right, uh, next witness is Mr. Paul Phillips. You know, just, just for the record, Mr. Phillips, uh, did submit a fiscal impact statement, so I'm just going to mark that, if I may. A forty.
Okay, Mr. Phillips, uh, has to be sworn in, he's the planner, I believe?
Yes, ma'am.
Hang on one second, you were saying you were marking that, do you know what the number?
A forty.
A forty, okay. Sir, would you raise your right hand, you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Can we have?
Get your full name for the record, please.
Paul Phillips, P-H-I-L-L-I-P-S.
May we have some qualifications, please, Mr. Phillips?
Surely, uh, I'm a principal in the firm of Phillips Price, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, I am a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, I hold a master's degree in urban planning from Hunter College, I've been practicing planning, uh, in New Jersey for approximately forty years, I am the planning consultant to a number of, uh, planning and zoning boards and governing bodies in the state, I've appeared as a planning expert and been accepted as an expert in roughly two-hundred-and-fifty municipalities in the state, I've appeared both before this board and the planning board multiple times, and I've been accepted as an expert on dozens of occasions in the Superior Court of New Jersey.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Phillips, we'll accept your qualifications.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, Mr. Phillips, were you retained to provide a planning analysis for the proposed assisted-living facility?
I was.
All right, what did you do to prepare for your task?
So as part of my due diligence, I conducted a number of tasks, I obviously, uh, visited the subject property and surrounding area, I did that on more than one occasion, uh, I reviewed the plans for development, which are before the board this evening, I reviewed the township's zoning ordinance and zoning map, I reviewed the township's master plan documentation, uh, I reviewed the reports of the board's professionals, uh, I consulted, obviously, with the applicant and the development, uh, team involved in the project, and I attended all of the hearings that, uh, have occurred to date on this application.
Thank you, um, please give the board the benefit of your analysis and your findings.
Sure, so briefly, uh, I know that other witnesses described the, the property and surrounding area, but just to refresh the board's memory and, and put this into some context, the, the property itself, uh, consists of roughly, uh, ten acres, it's located along Inman Avenue, which is a county roadway, and currently, the property is improved with a skilled nursing facility, which as you heard from a prior witness, there are a total of a hundred-and-twenty-two beds, uh, and then there on the, uh, portion of the site where the assisted living is proposed, there are two, uh, single-family, uh, properties. The site is boarded, uh, on two sides by single-family residences, that would be both to the north and the east, uh, obviously, directly across Inman Avenue is the Plainfield Country Club, and then to the west, uh, along Inman Avenue, there is a vacant tract, and then the residential, single-family residential land use pattern picks up again. The proposal before you this evening is to develop a three-story assisted-living facility in the easterly portion of the tract, it is proposed to consist of a hundred-and-six beds, seventy of which would be for Alzheimer's or memory care residents. Uh, access to the property would continue to be exclusively from Inman Avenue, there would be, as you just heard, a second access point, intended to serve specifically the assisted-living facility. This project would require a D-one use variance, as assisted-living facilities are not expressly permitted in the underlying zoning district, it's an R-A zoning district, neither are skilled nursing facilities permitted in the district. Uh, additional D-variances are required for building height, and for the applicant exceeding the Floria Ratio requirement. There's also a technical C-variance associated with the building height, since the underlying single-family zoning only allows two-and-a-half stories, we're requesting a, a three-story building. There are also C-variances for both building and lot coverage, and lastly, a sign variance is also being sought. In terms of the, uh, planning proofs, let me start with the D-one use variance, uh, and obviously, uh, this development involves, uh, what is considered to be, under Jersey state law, an inherently beneficial use, a use by its very nature that in, that promotes the public welfare, and that alone presumptively satisfies the positive criteria for the granting of a use variance. The courts in New Jersey, uh, the, uh, evolving case law has held that specialized senior housing facilities are inherently beneficial uses. The earlier cases were a case called Urban Farms versus Borough and Franklin Lakes, there was a second case, uh, Mercurio versus Del Vecchio, uh, these, uh, cases addressed nursing homes, in particular, the first case has addressed nursing homes, there was another appellate division case, J-Bar versus West Orange, and they held that a four-profit senior citizen congregate care facility, which is a residential care facility with fewer supportive services actually than an assisted-living facility and dementia facility, that was deemed to be an inherently beneficial use. The other key take from the J-Bar case was that the court basically noted that all senior citizens in need, and I quote, deserve the attention, assistance, and protection of the state. There are additional cases that have come out subsequently that have held specifically that it, that assisted-living facility is an inherently beneficial use, Sunrise versus Madison Zoning Board of Adjustment, and then there is a, at least one other, I think more than one appellate division case is recognizing assisted-living as an inherently beneficial use, the key one being Meridian versus the Township of Wall. So in short, this development, in my professional opinion, clearly falls within the scope of an inherently beneficial use. So having said that, uh, the New Jersey Supreme Court, in the case of Seeker versus Wall, uh, basically put together a test for an inherently beneficial use, which a board must undertake, it's a four-part balancing test to determine whether or not the D-one use variance should be granted. Uh, the first part of the test is the identification of the public interest, which is at stake. The second part of the test is to identify any detrimental impacts associated with the proposal. The third part of the test is to determine whether the imposition of any reasonable conditions would reduce those impacts, if possible, and then the fourth or last part of the test is basically, the board weighs the positive aspects and the negative aspects of the project, and basically makes a determination on balance whether the variance should be granted. I would just also further note, before I address the four-part test, that an inherently beneficial use is exempt from satisfying the so-called Medici, uh, criteria, which is this board clearly hears D-one variances all the time, uh, and the Medici criteria basically set up what's known as an enhanced quality of proof, whereby the board would basically have to reconcile the granting of the relief with the fact that the underlying zoning doesn't envision the use. With inherently beneficial use, that Medici reconciliation test is not required of an applicant. So let me go through the four-part seeker test, starting with the identification of the public, uh, interest. And really, the question for you as a board is, what is the public interest to be advanced vis-à-vis this proposed assisted-living facility? I've already noted that the courts have established- I've already noted that the courts have established that these facilities rank high on the public interest scale. You also may recall during the first hearing, you heard from a prior witness of the applicant, Mr. Hodges, who is Care One's chief strategy officer, that there is a need for this assisted living facility, given the underlying demographics and given the supply of existing facilities nearby, which were relatively limited, based on his testimony. He also testified on the provided data with regard to need, both within Edison Township in particular and also within a five-mile radius of the site. Would also point out, in terms of the first part of the SECA test, that the applicant has obtained a certificate of need for the facility from the State Department of Health. The applicant's prior witness also basically testified, and I would again ask the board to recognize that there has been no new assisted living facility built in the township for fifteen years or more, and that the demand for beds exceeds the supply that is basically being provided by the three existing older facilities. And they would be Whispering Knoll, Clara Barton, and Brighton Gardens. Mr. Hodges testified that they all have high occupancy rates, and also, the memory care beds are pretty almost non-existent in the market area. I would also just add that particularly in the last ten to fifteen years, not only has there been a general aging of the population in the state, but also, there's been a substantial increase in the percentage of elderly that are being diagnosed with dementia or Alzheimer's. That was not the case ten to fifteen years ago, and you're seeing more of a demand for Alzheimer's and memory care beds throughout the state, basically to satisfy that particular need. The other thing to consider at this site is that with assisted living and Alzheimer's beds in place, Care One basically would be in a position to provide an appropriate transition in the level of care at one site and one project, without the need for relocation of basically residents to a different facility or operator or even a different area. It would basically allow Care One to provide a continuum of care at one location as the skilled nursing facility already exists essentially next door. And I think this is important so family members and caregivers can be in close proximity to the residents, so there is no uprooting when a different level of care is necessary. I would further note, I mentioned in my sort of preamble of my due diligence that I did review your master plan documentation, and I reviewed both the 2003 master plan and also the 2011 reexamination report. And from those documents, there is a quote in terms of one of the express goals, it's actually one of the housing goals, and I quote, is encourage the development of creative senior citizens' housing options such as assisted living and active adult market housing to accommodate an aging population. And I would say that, notwithstanding that directive, based on my review of the current zoning ordinance, there is nowhere within the confines of the ordinance where assisted living is expressly permitted as either a principal use or a conditional use. The zoning does provide for nursing homes, and it provides for, actually, within several zones, but there is no provision anywhere in the zoning ordinance for assisted living residents. So, for all of the reasons that I have articulated, I believe this application ranks very high on the public interest scale. Step two is the identification of detrimental impact sura facts. So, a couple of things. The first thing I would point out is that the skilled nursing facility has clearly been part of the neighborhood fabric for many years. I think there was prior testimony that the facility is somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty years old, or that Care One has been the operator for roughly twenty years. Secondly, I would indicate that assisted living facilities are not at all, in my professional planning opinion, they're not at all inherently incompatible with single-family residential homes. There are numerous examples throughout the state where assisted living facilities and single-family residences have coexisted harmoniously throughout the state. Third, you heard from the project architect at, I think, the prior hearing, the building has been designed to have more of a residential as opposed to a more institutional feel. Fourth, the access has been confined to Inman Avenue, a county thoroughfare, so this expansion is not going to place traffic on local residential streets. You also heard from Mr. DeZario twenty minutes ago. I would just offer that, from a planning perspective, assisted living facilities are relatively benign from a land use standpoint and also from a traffic standpoint. Residences do not drive at assisted living facilities. And I think Mr. DeZario further indicated that there would be few vehicular trips that would be generated during both the AM and PM hours. I think he indicated at a max that you'd be dealing with one car every four minutes at the maximum. So, therefore, I think the use will have a minimal traffic impact on the adjacent roadway network. And I'd just offer, lastly, along those lines, that any development with a new use is going to have impacts per se. This project is going to have impacts. But the task, as the board is well aware, and particularly in relation to an inherently beneficial use, is whether those impacts rise to being so significant in nature so as to be substantially detrimental to the public welfare. And I think here, the public welfare is the immediately adjacent residential neighborhood. I would also point out, I mentioned I looked at the underlying RA zoning. I would point out that in addition, it's basically a single-family district, but it does allow several other uses as principal uses. Places of worship are allowed with associated schools. Private nonprofit schools are similarly allowed. I would basically offer that such uses, depending on the circumstances, can be potentially intense. And in some cases, they could even be more intense than what's proposed here from both a land use and a traffic impact standpoint. And lastly, with regard to impacts, I would just say that the overall density proposed here, and that would be both the beds at the skilled nursing and the proposed beds at the assisted living facility in terms of the total number of beds per acre, is not out of line with what typically finds for such facilities, including the facilities in Edison Township, and I'll get to that a little bit, in a little bit. The third part of the test has to do, as I mentioned, with the imposition of reasonable conditions. So, what the court said in SECA is, is the board actually has an obligation to determine whether any of these impacts could be lessened or mitigated through the imposition of reasonable conditions on the applicant and on the project. And I think, in actuality, this applicant has designed the project in a manner that at least it sought to keep project impacts to a minimum. So, the applicant, for example, is providing, and I'll also get into this when I deal with the height variance, but the applicant's providing much larger building setbacks than what the zoning calls for. It is maintaining existing intervening vegetated areas where that's appropriate. It is introducing supplemental landscaping, all designed to afford protections to neighboring single-family homes. And as I mentioned, I'll talk about that more with regard to the height variance. The applicant is proposing a fence along the entire perimeter of the assisted living facility, eight-foot high in the side and rear yard. You heard at a prior hearing from our engineer, the lighting has been proposed to be sensitive to the neighbors. The light poles are relatively low. I think they're only sixteen feet high. There are house-site shields. There's no light spillage onto neighboring properties. Another key thing, and I'm not sure any of the other witnesses testified to this, but, and the site plan was put up, and you can refer to the site plan that's put up on the easel, but all of the parking has been located on the far side of the building, closer to the skilled nursing, away from the residences, directly to the east on Lewis Court. And again, that was done purposefully to keep that onsite activity away from those residential homes. If you also look at the site plan, you'll see that the applicant has designed the outdoor space for residents in the form of an interior courtyard, interior to the building, which, again, helps to limit noise and activity so as not to disturb the surrounding neighborhood. So, I think, in essence, the applicant has sought through its design to minimize impacts on adjacent single-family homes. Step four is the balancing test, again, to weigh the positives, meaning the public interest at stake, and the negatives, and determine whether the positives outweigh the negatives. Again, we've gone through the steps. On balance, I believe the positives do outweigh the negatives. And I would also just add that, given the inherently beneficial nature of the use and also the master plan policy directive, which advocates for development of assisted living residences within the township to meet the needs of the aging population, that this D-one use variance can be granted without compromising the intent and purpose of the master plan. Onto the FAR and height variances. The standard approved for these variances is different than a D-one use variance. They come out of two other New Jersey cases. For the D-four variance, it's the Randolph Town Center case. For the D-six height variance, it is a case called Grosso versus Spring Lake Heights. And basically, in these cases, the court opined that the burden of proof is not the same as in the case of a D-one use variance. There's a more relaxed standard of proof. What the court basically says in these cases, the applicant basically needs to affirmatively testify that the development proposed on the site can overcome any problems that might result from the fact that, in this case, we have a FAR in excess of what the zone allows, and also, we have a height that's more than ten percent in excess of what the zone allows. In other words, what the court is saying is, basically, put in affirmative proofs that this site can still function in an appropriate fashion, consistent with sound planning principles, and without compromising public health, safety, and welfare, notwithstanding the fact it doesn't meet these two requirements. I believe the answer to that is yes, it can meet that test. Let me deal with the height first. As you recall, there's a two-and-a-half-story forty-foot limit. That is essentially, in my opinion, in reading the zoning, designed and primarily intended for the main principal use, which is single-family dwellings. I would also indicate that the existing nursing facility, which is a single-story building and fifty years old, is based on an outdated, inefficient prototype that we're no longer seeing employed, either for nursing or assisted living. What we're seeing today is more and more new construction of assisted living facilities and specialized senior care facilities that are three stories in height. In some cases, we're seeing four stories or greater, but typically, we're seeing three stories in height. And incidentally, I basically looked at the three existing facilities that I mentioned earlier that are located within the township. Two of the three are three stories in height. One is two stories. And each of those, each of the three, actually adjoins single-family homes at some point or another, abutting that site. Not the complete sites, but at some point or another, they're adjacent single-family homes. You also heard from our architect, the three-story height makes sense operationally. It keeps, also keeps the building footprint contained within the overall site. And it also, from an operational and functional standpoint, it limits the distances which residents, staff, and visitors must walk within a building, which, if you even try to go to one or two stories, would be far too spread out in today's environment to meet the programmatic needs of these type of facilities. As I mentioned, the building is set back more than the zoning requires. It's actually being set back to the side yard, which is actually the rear lot lines of the homes on Lewis Court, six times what the zoning allows. There's a fifteen-foot allowable side yard setback, give or take, because it's at a bit of an angle. This building is roughly set back ninety feet. And it's roughly double the rear yard setback to the rear lot lines of the homes on King Street. And again, that was done to basically mitigate any impacts associated, what amounts to a seven-foot, the applicant is seeking seven additional feet in terms of the height over and above the forty-foot standard in the district. I would also note that the forty-foot height is being proposed in order to get a varied roof line. You heard from our architect, again, looking to get a residential look and feel. This applicant can go to a flat-roofed building and completely stay within the forty-foot height limit. I don't think aesthetically that the resulting structure and design would be as desirable as what is proposed here. I would also note that what this roof line is able to do, it enables the applicant to basically hide the mechanical equipment on the roof, basically above that additional seven feet. It's basically in a well, if you will, on top of the roof. And I think this is also important, as the architect mentioned in his testimony, actually, only about a quarter, about twenty-five percent of the building footprint actually extends above the forty-foot height. Again, this was all done to reinforce the overall residential design and feel, and it's basically the varied roof lines that are driving the additional height. In terms of the visual impacts with regard to height, there was a lot of time spent at the last meeting and a lot of back-and-forth regarding the simulations that were prepared by the applicant with regard to the buffering and also the corresponding sightline analysis that was done, both from King Street and Lewis Court. The bottom line here, I think I can kind of summarize that, at least as I understand it, and I've reviewed those documents, is that, sort of, worst case, because it depends on the vantage points, and particularly those vantage points where there's no existing vegetation to preserve, worst case during winter months, which Mr. Bignell had asked for, portions of the building are going to be visible. Probably up to half of the building is going to be visible even at the initial planting. However, after about five years, only the upper level will be visible, and after ten years, only the roof line will be visible, and that's a worst-case perspective scenario. I would also just add, from a planning standpoint, I don't think it's reasonable to ask or require the developer to fully screen the structure from every surrounding single-family property, and certainly not at initial planting. In just about every case that I'm aware, where I've either represented other assisted living developers or reviewed applications on behalf of my municipal boards, that some or all of the building is exposed to view of the surrounding homes or the building is only partially screened. This is not unusual or atypical. So, in sum, with regard to the height variance, I think this property can overcome problems associated with that additional seven-feet height differential on the portion of the building that I had mentioned. The FAR variance. The first point I want to make is I think the deviation sought is relatively minimal in nature. The allowable FAR is two, point, point two-five-one-three. The applicant is proposing point two-eight-four-three. Not a large percentage increase in the FAR. Second point I'd make is that the, an FAR for this district is principally, again, intended for detached, single-family residences. Third point is, an FAR standard, from a planning viewpoint, is a regulatory tool that is designed primarily to basically control the intensity of development, activity, traffic, parking, and so forth, and secondarily, to control the building mass. And again, as I mentioned, this is a rather benign use in terms of the intensity, as residents do not drive. With regard to the building mass, there is and will be, I'll acknowledge, exposure of building, probably several hundred feet of exposure of the building, particularly the side yard that faces the rear yard of the homes on Lewis Court. But again, that's to some extent mitigated by the size of the setbacks, the buffering, which will tend to reduce those impacts. The architect also testified that there are, basically, there's articulation and bumpouts in the building along that elevation. Again, all intended to break up or soften the overall mass of the building. And the last point on this, from a sort of a density standpoint, and to some extent, a mass standpoint, I kind of looked at the number of beds per acre at the existing facilities in Edison. And this project is roughly equivalent to Whispering Knoll in terms of the number of- of beds per acre, but there are actually fewer beds per acre that are proposed here in relation to both the Heritage at Clara Barton and Brighton Gardens. And I also think these projects, some of these projects also have additionally the long-term care or independent living, so they're actually even denser when you add that. I'm just looking at the assisted living portion. And again, as I mentioned, each of these projects adjoins single-family homes on at least one side or at least one direction. So, for all of these reasons, I think this property can accommodate problems associated with what otherwise would be a conforming FAR, and again, I think the deviation sought is relatively minimal in nature. There are bulk variances, lastly, for building and lot coverage. This district allows a building coverage of no more than 15%, and a lot coverage of no more than 30%. And again, keep in mind, I know I've said this, I don't want to beat it to death, but these standards are principally designed for single-family residential. And consistent with the relatively recent New Jersey Supreme Court case known as Price versus Hameji, these, these variances, bulk variances, are really subsumed within the D variance for the Use. What I'd add with regard to the impervious coverage standard in particular, the purpose of such a standard is twofold, to basically control stormwater management, and secondly, to provide some aesthetics, because you don't want a site to be completely blacktopped. And then along those lines, obviously, our engineer dealt with stormwater, but aesthetics is kind of more my bailiwick as a planner. I think that with the 39.9% total coverage proposed, if you just do the reverse, over 60% of this lot will still be open space and green space. And I think that that's more than adequate for this particular use, and the building coverage is only 16.8%, again, relative to a 15% standard designed for single-family residents. I don't think these deviations are at all egregious. I think they're relatively de minimis in nature, and I think they can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or the zone plan. And I think, lastly, and Donna, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but I think technically we need a variance for the third freestanding sign.
We need a variance for the third freestanding sign, and also, the height requirement is six feet, and one of the pre-existing signs on this skilled facility is six feet and 10 inches.
So, what I'd offer on the six feet, 10 inches, if we're not proposing to do anything with that sign, it's an existing condition, we're not proposing a change in the sign, that kind of goes with the property, but I will say that it is important and reasonable for purposes of identification of the assisted living facility to have a freestanding sign for identification purposes. I think it's perfectly appropriate, and I think, again, any relief associated with that additional sign can be granted, consistent with the negative criteria, as I testified. And I believe I've covered all of the variances.
All right, so then, to sum up, in your opinion, then, does the application satisfy the statutory criteria? That enables the board to grant the variances requested?
I believe that it does, yes.
Thank you. I have no further questions for Mr. Phillips at this time.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Phillips? Yes, Mr. Taglinetti?
Yes, ma'am, sure. You were talking about the height, 47-foot height.
Yep.
And you made reference that the reason why you have the height is because it is basically going to be a mansard-top roof shielding the rooftop equipment.
Part of the reason for the height that we're seeking, not all of it, but part of it, yes.
Okay. I'd like to know what the other reason is in a moment.
Well, okay.
But as we talked about the equipment, we have no way of knowing, typically, what you put on the roof is generators, condensers, I'm sorry, and we have no way of knowing what your heating and cooling systems are going to be. You may have a Reni, you may have a Magic Pack, you may have self-contained units within the rooms, okay? You may have another system that does not have anything on the roof. So, without that knowledge of what's going on the roof, how can we, you know, say that what you said was reasonable?
So, I'm obviously not the architect, but my discussions with the architect and what I believe that I heard from the architect during the architect's testimony, and the architect would know the specs on the rooftop equipment where I don't, is that him having knowledge of those specs, I believe his testimony is, is that they can be fully shielded basically within that depressed roof. But that, again, is the recollection of his, of his testimony.
My point is that you may have units or systems, heating and cooling units, that do not require anything to be on the roof.
Well, I don't think that Mr. Phillips can answer that, but we will, the architect has a medical issue for today, but he will be back neck, at the next meeting, and why doesn't he clarify that for you?
Okay, there we go.
All right?
Yep.
Phil, excuse me, are you relating this to the height of the structure that the variance are seeking?
Yes.
So, you're seeking a seven, a seven-foot height increase. This will be increased, again, with the RTUs on top of the roof, correct? If you have rooftop units, if they're bolted to the roof, they're going to be part of the equipment structure.
Not my understanding of the testimony, but he's going to be back, because he's subject to cross, and I think Donna will just redirect him to make sure that, based on his knowledge of the specs for that mechanical equipment on the roof, that it will be screened by the roof. I, I obviously can't answer that, I'm not the expert, but that was my understanding.
I can tell from your question that I'm going to need to elicit a little more information for the board from the architect, which I can do, I know what to ask him.
Okay. So, if the structure, if you add the RTUs on top of the roof and they're bolted to the roof, rooftop units, the rooftop, if.
In addition to where we are now?
Correct.
But they're not going to do that?
Oh, you're not going to, so?
It, whatever's in the roof, I believe the testimony was, whatever is going on the roof is enclosed, no one's going to see anything.
But it's going to add to the height.
Forty-seven feet.
Excuse me, one second. But it's going to add to the height of the structure.
Yes.
Because it's bolted to the principal structure, it becomes part of that structure.
I just didn't know if you were adding it to the 70.
I am. I am adding it to the 70.
Can I?
One person at a time, please.
Go ahead, Phil. I don't think they're adding to the structure there. The roof level, the flat roof is here, and what we're seeing at the 47-foot height is up here, and they need that well to hide the rooftop units that they're going to put there.
Okay, all right.
My point is, if they change the system or they have another system, they may not need rooftop units, and therefore, they don't need the extra height, and we can reduce the height of the building.
I, I think, Mr. Taglinetti, when Mr. Palmer Rico returns, I am going to ask him about certain code changes that have occurred over time, and because of those code changes and ductwork that's required and sprinkler systems that are required and size of pipes, that that has driven some of that height, if not all of it. So, when he comes back, I'll, I'll ask him that question.
Any other question? Yes, Mr. Bell?
So, you did say to his question that there were other reasons that you were seeking the height?
So, again, if you recall the architectural testimony, there are, there are various roof lines, varied roof lines on the building, and basically, the varied roof lines go up to that highest point, which is 47 feet. The portion of the roof which would hide the mechanical equipment is at a lower elevation, okay? So, if you look at the exterior of the building, if you have an elevation of the building in your plan set, you'll see that, that varied roof line along the exterior of the building is where the measurement to 47 feet occurs. And that varied roof line doesn't occur on more than roughly 25% of the, the height of the roof. The bulk of the roof, as I mentioned, 75%, it actually complies, but we're trying to get a residential feel along the exterior of the site. That's the other reason for the height variance, and why we think that compares favorably to a flat-roofed building that would comply. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board, from Mr. Phillips?
I have none, sure.
You're, you're next, Mr. Phillips. I wouldn't go without asking you, Mr. Bignell.
Mr. Phillips, I'm looking at a picture that I was given at the last meeting. It's, I don't know how to describe it, but it's the single-family homes, and then it shows the roof of the proposed building. Do you, are you testifying that that fits right into a residential neighborhood? I mean, that's what your testimony was.
I'm sorry, that it's what?
That it fits in with the residential neighborhood. I know they, I know they were talking about the screening last time, but it just seems like an awful big structure. If I lived in this big, beautiful house, and I'm sitting in my backyard looking at how that back, that big structure, how do you say that it doesn't impact my, the, the zone plan?
I never said it doesn't impact. In fact, I said there would be impacts.
Well, let me, let me, let me ask the question first. If it's, is it a minimal impact, or, how would you write that?
In the context of an inherently beneficial use in doing the C-CON test, while there are impacts which I conceded, I do not believe that in that context, the impacts rise to the level of being substantially detrimental, and I'll tell you why. Again, I will acknowledge that the building, basically, along that exposure is lengthy, but in the combination of the enhanced setbacks, the distance between the buildings, the intervening both existing and supplemental landscaping that will screen portions of the building, and after 10 years will basically only show the roof line, and given my own knowledge and my own experience that these type of facilities basically exist harmoniously with the single family, all that taken into consideration, while there are impacts, I don't think in this context, they rise to that level of being substantially detrimental, no.
Well, I'm not satisfied yet. If I look at this picture, because it's your, it was given to me by your, by your, your people.
I'm sorry.
I don't know if it's numbered or not, I don't, I don't know how to describe it. I think it's Lewis Court Simulation 1, Section AA. I apologize, it's very low.
Hold on. Uh, all right. Mr. Bignell, does it have a white? Let me see.
There's a little white house that has a big mansion next to it.
Do you have this one?
Okay, well, that's, that's probably, that's in the packet, too, I'm sure, so.
A31 is one of them.
Yeah, there it is. Okay.
Hi, I have it. A31?
A31, where there's a white house, and if you look to the left of the white house, there is the proposed facility, which looks like it's in that person's backyard.
Yeah, speaking through the trees. I see it.
All right. Yeah, is A31, is that the one that shows the two houses on Lewis Court with a, a perspective of the sort of top portion of the assisted living? Is that, that's what I have, A31?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's the one.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
So, my question is, and this is what I was trying to ask the last time, to me, it looks like there are a lot of deciduous trees right there, so they're going to, they're going to drop their leaves, and so for maybe four to five months a year, you're going to see a lot more of the building, even after 10 years. And, 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 you know, the, you used as your criteria that this has been existing use, and it's been here for 50 years, and, but it's only been a one- and two-story building, so it really hadn't any impact on, on the surrounding property. So, you don't believe that, that making the building that mass at that location is, is not an impact on this property?
I never said that. I've said now twice.
Well, substantial. I know, we, we use the language, we use the language substantial impairment and things like that, but.
I don't think it rises, in the context of this inherently beneficial use, and given all of the factors that are articulated, I don't think it rises to the level of inherently beneficial use.
Let me ask you, then, the.
I'm sorry, to a substantial detriment.
Okay, let me just ask you a one-on-one question, then. If you own the house on the right, and it looks like it's a million-dollar house to me, would you be upset if they put that in your backyard?
Actually?
You know, that's not, no.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm asking you as professional opinion, that's all I'm asking.
There'll be no outbursts, please. My rule stands, no outbursts, and everybody will be courteous to each other.
And then my final, my final question would be, is it, is it possible to rearrange, like, the roof line of the building to back it away so it doesn't impact that, that property?
All right.
Is that an architect's question, or is that a planner's question?
Can I?
One person at a time, please.
I'm dying to answer the question. I want to be responsive to Mr. Bignell's question, but I'll defer to you.
First, I, I think it's important to understand that, you know, to, to make, to ask a question, wouldn't you be upset? I don't know that that's the appropriate question from a planning standpoint. Some people might be upset, I don't know if you would be upset, Hank, but it's not a personal type of question to ask.
Well, I did, I said. I said if he lived there, if he lived there, would he be upset?
But still, it's not, it's not an appropriate question for him.
Why not?
Because he's already given his opinion three times.
As a professional planner that doesn't live in the house or in the neighborhood.
He's already, he's given.
I understand that, and I respect Mr. Phillips, a wonderful planner, believe me.
Okay.
My question is, if he lived in that house, would he, would it bother him? Would he show up as the objecting planner for the neighborhood if that was the case?
A lot of people, a lot, a lot of things bother a lot of people, but I don't think that is the question to ask this planner. But to answer your architectural question, I will say, if you, I don't know if you recall, in February, we asked for a continuance so that we could try to redesign it, and Care One did try to do all of that, but they couldn't. It was impossible.
Well, one, one last question, then. The, I think the testimony was that we could put a flat roof on this building, but we chose not to because it looks nicer. Is that, is that your opinion? Or is that, I mean, if you put a flat roof on, you probably wouldn't see this building off in that neighborhood, and it would probably be less intrusive from a neighbor's point of view.
Yeah.
It would probably limit a variance, and it would probably do a lot of things to make the neighbors happy.
I can answer the question. So, here's my professional opinion on this, and there are trade-offs. We could do a flat-roofed building at 40 feet, and you're correct, less of the building would be exposed during that initial planting, but still, some portion of the building's going to be exposed. And you asked the question, appropriate one, about winter months. So, you know, at initial planting, you're still going to have probably 40% of that building or so exposed. I think, I just think, with seven feet of additional height, with basically being able to do this varied roof line along that facade, and I've admitted it's a lengthy facade, actually, giving it more of a residential feel actually will have less impact on the residential homes because it has that residential look than a flat-roofed building seven feet lower that I think is going to have more of an institutional feel and look to it. I honestly believe that from a professional standpoint. This applicant could go to a flat-roofed building, but I don't think it's preferred, and I don't think it's desirable, and I, I think that it would have a, it actually would have a worse effect, relatively speaking, on the residences. I really believe that.
The, the mass in that picture, though, it's, it's a continuous mass. Is there any way we could break that up architecturally? It's probably not a question for you, but is there a way we can break that to have less of an impact?
The architect can deal with that, but there are two things I think the architect attempted to do, the, the various varied roof lines along that entire facade, and he's also basically bumped out and articulated that building, if you look on the elevation, so that it's not one sort of flat, uniform facade, so that there is a break in the mass, if you, again, if you go to the architecturals. Whether there's anything more he could do, I'll defer to the architect, but certainly, I took notice that he, he did those two things.
The simulation just shows like, almost like one solid roof line across the back there, so that's why, yeah.
But it's broken up.
Okay.
All right, we like him. Why don't we let the architect?
Yeah, I'll wait, that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
You're welcome.
Excuse me, wait. Just, Ms. Avram, just so you're aware, we had one member that had to leave, and he is aware of the fact, the gentleman in between, he is aware of the fact that he will have to watch the CD when he vote, before he votes, and he will sign, okay?
Yes, that, that would, that would go for anyone.
I just wanted to be of record that you knew that.
Also, Madam Chairman, that would go for anyone who wasn't present in the December meeting.
Correct, but since he's here now, I just want it to be of record. Yes, Mr. Ayah?
Question about the height, again. Are there any residential how, residential structures behind this structure that you're proposing that reach the height of 40 feet or 47 feet as you propose?
So, I didn't measure the heights of the houses, I only took judicial notice that the height, allowable height, as you say, is 40 feet in the district, and some of the houses appear to be two-and-a-half stories, which is allowed, but again, I did not measure the height.
A two-and-a-half-story house can be under 40 feet, and certainly under 47.
It could be, it absolutely could be.
And whatever the elevation, the elevation might have a, have an impact as well.
Okay, so, when you say the word impact, that this is going to impact the residential neighborhood, you're talking about 100% increase in the amount of beds, almost 100% increase in the amount of traffic, you're asking for a seven-foot increase in the height, and there's no residential home in that area that is at that height or has that type of traffic coming down the street? Is that correct? There's no home that's 40 feet or 47 feet?
I don't, I don't, I think that you might be assuming some facts that aren't in evidence. I don't think there's any evidence as to how high the homes are. I know there's a great differential. Also, as Mr. DiZario indicated, you know, you can talk about percentages if you like, but the reality is that.
I do, I do like to talk about percentages.
Okay, but the reality, the reality is that the, if you go there and you look at the impact, the impact is minimal, as he said. As far as, I think, was it the, the first thing you said about break, breaking up the height? I'm sorry, the first thing you, the first part of your question?
No, talking about the, well, talking about the vehicular, traffic.
Right, we took care of that.
The amount of beds.
All right, so the amount of beds are the, are the amount of beds.
Right, doubling the amount of beds.
That doesn't drive the, the traffic, other than what the testimony was.
It does increase the traffic.
Well, there.
It does. It increases the parking.
The, the parking is compliant. The testimony was that the maximum amount of parking that would be needed, based upon the empirical data from other facilities, is 69, and we're providing 92. So, I just want to make sure that, that we don't lose, lose sight of what the record says, what the evidence says. I understand that there may be a certain perception, but the, the, your judgment has to be based upon the evidence contained in the record. be based upon the evidence contained in the record.
Madam Chairman, can I ask another question?
Yes, Mr. Bignell, sure.
Is there any reason why we can't make it, make the facility smaller? Does it have to be at this scale?
Yeah, you know, I...
Is there a reason, is there a, is some kind of reason why it has to be 90, an extra 106 beds?
I think that's a very good, that's a very good question, Mr. Bignell. 106 beds is the minimal number of beds that is deemed as a feasible facility, all right? We have in, that was CO'd recently in...
One person at a time, please. Mr. Riley, you will get your chance.
Oh, no, I'm not, if you just...
Mr. Riley, it's okay. She's allowed to comment, and you will have your opportunity, and as will Mr. Gazarovski. Right, so I don't think she's testifying yet because you weren't present for the other meetings. We've had several. So let her finish, and then if there is an issue, we will address it, okay?
So, would you like to also answer the question?
In Paramus, recently, a building was CO'd, 126 beds that I presented. A neighbor objected and filed an appeal. Judge Carver in Bergen County, and what I'm going to do now is mark Judge Carver's decision, if I may, as, where are we, A-41. The neighbor had appealed, and she was concerned that she would see the building. It was quite a distance away, but the important thing is that...
Ms. Arum, if I may just interrupt you for a minute, is that a reported decision or an unreported?
I'm getting to that. This is not a reported decision. As you know, that an unreported decision is still to serve as guidance, and so, since the question was asked, and I think that Mr. Bignell deserves an answer, in this case, Judge Carver stated, "You know, I think I can take judicial notice that with the aging population in this country, there is sadly an increased need for places like this facility." He then says on page 38, "Obviously, this is not something that Mrs. Cruzos, who was the neighbor, wanted to wake up one day and have in her backyard, but I have to balance that against the public good, and I certainly think that that's not terribly difficult." Then he says on page 39 to 40, "So, you know, we have to deal with the reality that we still deal in a world where finances are important, and we all can't go around printing money," he says parenthetically. "So we have to acknowledge that for a place like this to exist, it has to be financially viable." And again, not only is the need for financial viability, but there's just frankly a need for the facility. So in, and this was for 126 beds, so 106 is really the minimum that Care One has determined is feasible.
Okay, Ms. Arum, so here's my next question to you. You will have copies, I presume, for the board submitted? Okay, so that's one. Two, I am gonna direct the board that as it is an unreported decision, you may take guidance from it as you deem appropriate in weighing this application. It does not mean it is binding upon your determination in any way. Okay.
Now...
Yeah, I just wanted to also just address, just based on my own experience, and again, I have quite a bit of experience on both sides of the table on assisted living, and typically, the assisted living facilities are in the, anywhere in the range from about 80 to 120 beds. And I also looked at the existing facilities in Edison, and just to give you some indication, the Clara Barton, there are 98 assisted living beds, Whispering Knolls, 126, and Brighton Gardens is 118. So at 106, what's being proposed by, and by the way, each one of those abuts on at least one side, single-family residences. What we're proposing here is kind of within that reasonable range.
No, 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 you're asking for 228 beds, Tony.
No, 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 what do you, no, no.
An increase of 106 beds.
No, no, this is a 106-bed facility. I don't know, I don't understand where you're coming from.
You're proposing 106 beds. How much, how many do you have there now?
Nothing. There are two facilities, Mr. Ayo, there are two facilities.
It's a second facility.
So, so can I try and address that, too?
Let him first figure out. He's confused.
Let me try and address that concern. It's a legitimate question. Just let me, let me deal with it. But I want him to listen since he asked the question.
Okay, go ahead.
So let me try and address that. I think it's a legitimate question, yes.
You're serious?
There are an existing 122-bed skilled nursing. This full site is 10 acres. The sites that I just cited, some of which, at least two of which, Clara Barton and Brighton Gardens also have additional units. So Brighton Gardens has 30 long-term care beds, Clara Barton has 27 independent living units, but the size of these sites, four acres, five acres, three and a half acres, they're less than half the size of the site. We have 10 acres, and, and look, for argument's sake, split it in two. You got five and five. Say we have five acres, we have sites that are essentially equal to or larger than the sites which are accommodating assisted living in Edison. It's not out of line in terms of the number of beds for this sized site. Not out of character, not out of character with what's in Edison Township.
I'm not referring to the density, I'm referring to the number of units.
But again, you have to compare this in the context of a 10-acre site as opposed to a site that's half or less the size. I mean, that's, that's key. You have to make that comparison.
Mr. Phillips, how many stories is Brighton Gardens?
Brighton Gardens is two, the other two facilities are three.
And Brighton Gardens is on Oak Tree Road, correct?
Correct.
Major road.
As is Inman Avenue.
Right, and Clara Barton, Amboy Avenue is sort of a major road with a lot of businesses on it also, correct?
Similar kind of road to Inman in terms of its function?
No, no.
I mean, I don't, I don't know the traffic volumes...
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we will just, we will agree to disagree there. I'm talking about Oak Tree Road and Brighton Gardens, Oak Tree Road, which is a major road with a lot of businesses, Clara Barton, which is Amboy Avenue, it's a, I'll say, a major road, and there's a lot of businesses, and I will stop at that, and we can agree to disagree. Does anyone else have any more questions of Mr. Phillips? None. Okay, Ms. Shaw, what do we do next now, since we're doing this a little bit different?
I, I don't have any further witnesses at this time. I do, I do reserve the right to present any additional witnesses that I feel are necessary, and to recall Mr. Phillips if necessary.
Well, here's, here's then the question. You're not complete with your case, then?
I am at the moment.
Okay.
But I want to reserve that right based upon whatever happens here and whatever Mr. Gazarovski does.
So you have no more...
No more tonight.
No, but I mean, no more expert witnesses?
Not at this time.
Again, not at this time. Do you have anyone else scheduled that's not here?
Yeah, normally, we would complete with all of the applicant's experts before we proceed to objectors, and since we are accommodating the fact that Mr. Gazarovski had a personal, I guess, ailment, and his objectors cannot be heard this evening, and we would like to hear and continue with this case and hear other objectors, I guess we need to know if there are any other expert witnesses that you intend to present. In terms of your, your case, the way it stands now, you obviously have an opportunity to redirect after cross-examination and recall the witness you have, witnesses you have, but there will be no additional new witnesses, is that correct?
Not at this time, no. If I have, if that changes, I will let you know, and then we'll, we'll discuss it. But right now, no, there are no plans for any additional witnesses.
Okay, because we can't go out to objectors or to the public or interested persons until we know your case is complete in terms of the witnesses you intend to present in your application in chief.
I understand that. If, and I don't want to, I'm not trying to argue with you, if, if anything changes, then of course that person would be subjected to cross-exam as well, but at this time, I don't see any change.
Okay, that, that, we can't operate that way only because that is not orderly, and we are allowed pursuant to the MLUL to proceed in an orderly fashion.
All right, then, let's go ahead with the cross, then.
Okay, so, so then, the witnesses that you have will be the witnesses that you'll call for any redirect, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want it?
All right, so...
What are we doing, Ms. Shaw?
So at this point, because of Mr. Gazarovski's condition, we will not be hearing from his objectors, who will have an opportunity on another date. Jim, do you know additional dates before we go out to the objectors that are present? Because many of the objectors and interested persons have been present at several of the other hearings, and I'm sure they would like to be heard.
I don't, my secretary is out for the evening, and I do not believe we have anything scheduled for possibly maybe June, June 30? I think...
We are in June.
July, I'm sorry, July.
July 30, okay. That might be a potential date, but I think what may, what we may have to do is just have, Ms. Arum, if you would please consult with Mr. Gazarovski and then reach out to our secretary to determine what is an appropriate date that the agenda will allow for, for his cross-examination and his objectors.
How is the board's schedule? Have you, you been busy?
Apparently, we don't know based upon the fact that our secretary is not in this evening, so...
Well, we only have one meeting in July.
We only have one meeting in July, and I don't know what's on that agenda, so I cannot tell you.
All right, I'll try to find out.
Right, so if you can confer, that would be helpful.
So, now, Ms. Shaw, what we're saying is we're not gonna have anything from Mr. Riley this evening.
Nothing from Mr. Riley.
Wouldn't that be before the objectors?
Normally, it would be, but I had spoken with Mr. Gazarovski, who is understanding of the fact that we're gonna move forward with the objectors that are present and that are unrepresented.
Okay, but then what happens to the fact that usually people get to speak once, and if they come back again?
They will not get to, right. Any objectors that speak this evening that are unrepresented will not have another opportunity, and again, this goes back to so long as there are no other witnesses. You have one opportunity to speak, and that's what we'll, we will adhere to.
So that's why I'm gonna ask this question of the people who are here. When we resume this, and either Mr. Riley or Mr. Gazarovski come up with their questions, that may lead to other questions and statements from the objectors, as well as if Ms. Arum then brings back any of her witnesses, and we know that the architect is coming back. So if you speak tonight, you can't speak again. So if you want to speak tonight, you'll be able to, but you will not be able to speak again if there's additional testimony brought up on the next round. So I will leave it to you if you feel you don't want to speak this evening because you would rather, number one, hear what either Mr. Riley, if he's here, or Mr. Gazarovski has to say in their cross, cross-examinations, because it may lead you to other factors and other questions, or if they come back with the architect, it may lead you to other facts and questions. You won't have that opportunity the next round. So if you feel that no one does want to speak tonight, we will go by that. I will leave it up to you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Bignell.
I have one question. Is Mr. Gazarovski, is he gonna bring his own objecting witnesses, or just cross-examine the ones that were here tonight?
That's a make-up plan or an...
So that's why I'm saying, I don't think, I don't think we should go out to the objectors at all.
Yeah, if you go to the object, they're not gonna get that information. They should, just a little more patient, so they can hear that side, too.
That's why I'm trying to explain to them that I really think it would behoove them not to be heard this evening because there's a lot more coming, and whatever's coming, they may have other questions that flow from that. That's what I'm saying.
You know, yes.
But I want to, I want to give them the opportunity because I want to be fair, but that's what I think that the objectors should do, is come back and not be heard this evening. Okay, all right, if you'd like, we could take a five, we could take a five-minute recess so you can, but do you understand what I'm saying? Okay, fine, we'll take a five-minute recess.
You'll, you'll know the meaning.
Okay, we're back. Some of us are back, but I think we're okay for now. So the public that's out there, do I assume that you have decided that you are going to wait until everything is out in the open before you want to speak? So you are, you are resolved with not speaking tonight, and that's not a problem for you? Okay, fantastic. Having said that, tell me if I'm wrong. Ms. Arum, you are now finished at this point.
Yes, I knew you weren't a date.
At this, for tonight. We are not gonna have any cross-examination because we're gonna do for Mr. Gorbowski. So nothing else will be done tonight. Pardon me? Yes, go ahead.
Since we are going to another date, and from what I understand from Mr. Riley, is Mr. Gazarovski will be bringing additional witnesses, expert witnesses, am I correct? Okay, so under those circumstances, the way this will proceed is when we continue this case matter, Mr. Gazarovski will have his expert witnesses and witnesses he wishes to present, and then there will be cross-examination, redirect, and then we will go out to the public like we would normally do. The only reason we opened it up tonight is because so many people have been here so many times and have not had an opportunity to speak, but under the circumstances, we will proceed in our normal, traditional fashion.
Okay, now...
We'll clarify, when the hearing starts at the next meeting?
Can you use a microphone?
Yeah, microphone.
Microphone, please.
Mr. Gazarovski would, Mr. Gazarovski would...
First cross-examine the, their witnesses and then present his witnesses, or...
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna advise him how he wishes to proceed, that's up to him.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I think what, I think what, is it Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Riley, he's just trying to confirm the process.
Yeah.
Which, as I understood it, is to, when we finish our, our direct, which we're finished, then, then Mr. Gazarovski will cross-examine our witnesses, and then he will be able to present his witnesses, I mean, I can redirect, but he can present his witnesses, I can cross-examine his witnesses.
Yes.
And then the public will cross-examine.
Then the cross...
I just, I think that's what you're...
Yeah, that would be the normal procedure, as far as...
That would be a normal procedure in a courtroom, but again, I am not directing Mr. Gazarovski how he wishes to proceed if you both wish to confer and agree that that's...
I thought that was the process.
Well, I think that's the process he'll follow.
If he wishes to present witnesses and cross-examine or address those witnesses in that fashion, again, that's...
Understood.
I'm not directing him, I'm not telling him how to proceed.
Okay.
As far as, as far as the next date, Madam Chairman?
Yes, that's the next thing.
It's tentative, it's tentative, would you like to...
Well, I can't, wait, excuse me, please, please let me have the floor. I don't like speaking over everyone, and I don't like yelling. As of now, and we are definite...
We'll confirm.
We are, no new notice, naturally, because it's being carried, it will be July 30.
July 30.
July 30. Our June meeting is full, and we only have one meeting in July and one meeting in August. So, Mr. Ayo, we are definite that July 30 is open, or do you want to see if you can call Lillian?
Let's, yeah, if I can...
Yeah, why don't you call Lillian and see if you can get her on the phone, just to double-check. If you'll just bear with us a minute, please.
If July 30 is canceled, will you, will there be a mailing of any sort?
No, you're gonna have to go on the website, like what happened in Feb, remember what happened in February when someone got ill and we had to cancel it? It was on the website, and Sandra won't be here, but Lillian will be here, and she'll try and get the word out, and it'll be on the website, and, and the new date will be on that.
But that's only, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Ayo.
That's only if the, if the hearing's canceled.
If it's canceled, that's what...
If the applicant doesn't appear, that's, they need to then sort of notice to the next hearing.
Correct, yeah.
Well, only if there's no announcement made. If the board has a hea, if the board conducts a hearing, a meeting that night, and for some reason, this application isn't heard, then the board can make an announcement of the next date without notice.
But I think at this point...
No, no answer right now.
No answer, okay.
But she has down here July 30.
No, that's just not fair, though, Madam Chair.
Well, I know.
That's just not fair.
Excuse me, unfortunately, as everyone knows, we have a secretary out on maternity leave. We have, the office has not been given a substitute, and the planning board secretary was unavailable this evening, and as far as we know...
We have July 30 as the tentative date.
As the tentative date. So we're gonna go with July 30. I'm sorry, that's the best I can do under the circumstances. If we had a secretary, we would be okay, but as of now, the date is July 30.